Okay, then I think we're ready. It is six o'clock. Uh, it is Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty-three. We are in the council chambers in Platteville, and I am calling the regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville to order. We'll start with roll call. Ken Killian.
Yeah.
Barbara Doss.
Here.
Kathy Kopp.
Here.
Jason Arts.
Here.
Lynn Parrott.
Here.
Todd Casper.
Here.
Bob Gates.
Here.
Okay, and the first item on our agenda tonight is a presentation of the city of Platteville Volunteer of the Year. So I'm going to ask Dr. Elizabeth Gates, who I have affectionately called Lucy for a long time, and Clint, our city manager, to join me at the voting. So, um, as you all know, during Hometown Week, uh, the chamber sponsors a Volunteer of the Year Award, uh, and people can nominate. Well, Dr. Gates was nominated uh, to receive the city's Volunteer of the Year Award uh, by the people in the Parks and Recreation Department because Dr. Gates has been incredibly supportive of our Aquatics Center. Uh, unfortunately, she was not able to be, uh, at the event in, um, July, but she is able to be here tonight. So, uh, we are thrilled uh, with, uh, Dr. Gates' support of the Aquatics Center, of the, um, lifeguards, of the opening out, just helping us out to be able to adequately supply lifeguards, uh, for our lessons, for everything. So thank you very much. And, uh, we are, um, indebted to you for your support.
I know your meetings are really long, so I won't say much, but I just want to thank all of you for giving up your time. I know from, uh, being married to Bob that it's incredibly time-consuming and you have a lot of committees that you serve on. And so thank you for giving up your time and thank you for your support of the pool as well.
Liz, we'd have to say that one of our best pieces of news this year was that we're losing less water out of the pool.
No.
All the things that would be, uh, our, our best news. Okay, uh, we'll move on into the agenda then. We have consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature. We have the council minutes from August twenty-second. We have payment of bills. We have the financial report from August. There are no appointments for boards or commissions tonight. There are licenses, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell and serve alcohol as in your, uh, packet. A street closing permit for Main Street from Chestnut Oak Street and Bonson from Maine to Irving on Saturday, October twenty-eighth. This is for the, uh, ten AM to one PM, the annual Sweet Treats Event sponsored by the Platteville Main Street Program. Uh, setting Halloween, if you can't even believe I'm saying Halloween, trick-or-treating hours, uh, for Tuesday, October thirty-first, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. We have Resolution twenty-three twenty-five proclaiming Constitution Week. Uh, this comes to us from, uh, the DAR, uh, Daughters of the American Revolution. We have a, uh, proc- uh, proclamation celebrating the twenty-fifth anniversary of the historic reenactment. And I'm hopeful that many of you were able to attend, uh, this past weekend, that, uh, annual event. And then we have Resolution twenty-three twenty-seven adopting the twenty-three twenty-eight Grant County Hazard Mitigation Plan. This is an update to a plan. Again, this is a plan. So, consideration of the consent calendar. Your, uh, do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar, except for H and J. I'd like separate discussion. To answer some of the questions I had.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the consent calendar, except for H, and which is the Resolution for claiming Constitution Week and the Resolution adopting the twenty-three to twenty-eight Grant County Hazard Mitigation Plan. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Candace will vote. Killian?
Yes.
Doss?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Gates? Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, Ken, questions on H, the Proclaiming Constitution Week?
Well, this was just a question of interest on my part, um. Uh, looking at twenty-three twenty-five, uh, city manager called up and and he asked about any questions, and this was one of the, one of the resolutions, and I was just trying to find out, um, the location of the structure that was built to contribute to the Constitution of the United States.
Location is at one-seven-seven-six D Street Northwest, Washington DC, two-zero-zero-zero-six.
Washington DC.
That is correct. You're welcome, sir.
And my other questions pained through the, um, large document we got, as far as, um, adopting the twenty-three twenty-eight Grant County Hazard Mitigation Plan update and, uh, I, um, asked the city manager some questions about this. And in particular, um, I was looking at Platteville, which is page ninety-one, or eighty-nine, let's see if it's, what's correct. Okay, city of Platteville is on page eighty-nine. Uh, what I'm wanting to find out is, um, what the city is, is supposed to be doing in these different areas. And then there's also the school district, and then the other one is UW Platteville. So, I asked questions of the city manager as far as, um, looking at the city of Platteville. Um, and, and the mistake as far as warehouses, we don't have warehouses here in Platteville anymore. The last warehouses in Platteville were nineteen eighty. The other thing that hit me was, um, there's no listing of eighty-one. I thought eighty-one would be significant to list as far as, uh, a highway. So, one fifty-one and eighty are listed, but I don't see, um, eighty-one. Anyway, going to, uh, Platteville, I'm just trying to find out what the city is supposed to be doing. So, for example, on the second item, it's high priority, two to three years city, three hundred thousand to one million dollars. Explore construction of emergency shelters for vulnerable populations. So what does, what does this mean?
My understanding with the plan is that we put together our hazard mitigation plan, which is proved at a county level. Um, with this plan put together, it does two types of things, is it identifies recommendations for us to try to mitigate hazards. Um, but it also then provides if funding were to come available through federal types of grants and such, that we'd be able to apply for such funds to be able to complete these projects as it has been identified in our plan.
Now, as far as the, the cost given there, three hundred thousand to one million, is this the expected anticipated cost that they would give us in the way of money? Or is it? What is that? Is that what that means?
We're, that's what we're estimating right now on what that project potentially could cost.
But would the city here itself do any planning?
In the event that the opportunity came by, or in the event through CIP planning and budgeting that we're prioritizing that as actions to take, then yes, we would be engaging with, uh, different architects and construction managers and such, and going through a process, a process like that to plan that out and understand what it would cost to build.
But in the me- in, in the meantime, the city is not actually sitting down and doing any planning.
Not other than having, uh, in regards to this plan, that's kind of what the, the plan is, is we've identified mitigating factors as a step. Um, opportunities coming forward off, after that again would be, do we want to on our own behalf dedicate funds for that to address those? Or, uh, again, there might be opportunity for different grant monies to come down, and by us having this captured in the county plan, uh, we'd be potentially eligible then to have those projects, uh, accepted for, for a funding solution.
And there's, then there's one down, I'll bring up, that says it's high priority, priority, city and existing staff time. And this is, uh, conduct targeted outreach to vulnerable populations during extreme temperature and storm events. So this would be a case that if these occur, then there's a possibility of funding. Is that what that is saying? But as far as planning on the city part, there wouldn't be that much. Is that, am I reading that right?
Like the other one, it's a mitigating factor that is out there as identified. Um, we have some factors in place of trying to communicate when it's, uh, temperature and that we have cooling centers and those types of elements. Um, but we don't have a, a full-fledged plan or procedure or policy in place on how we're engaging in that, uh, for, for hazardous events.
And looking at the next page, uh, that's ninety, uh, it says, that's the second one down on the right-hand side, strategy. Conduct study for stormwater overflow in the city and address identified issues. Who's, who's gonna? Who's gonna make determination of identified is- issues? Is that gonna be somebody in the future that will, the city do any talk?
I would say it's another future type of a thing where we'd be engaging in a study and having certainly input from the inside, but potentially having consultant eyes come in and help us evaluate that as well. Is that appropriate to say, Director Grofford?
Protect and restore wetlands to reduce flooding. At the same, it says cost unknown.
Again, yes, um, if, if an opportunity came our way where there was an emphasis on that, um, we would potentially be eligible in having that listed out on our hazard mitigation plan.
And finally, UW Platteville, it has three sections here. Uh, the first one is on page, this is page ninety-one, and, um, worked, will work to protect the public health, safety, and welfare of people on campus from hazard risk. So, again, cost, existing staff, staff time, external planning, and future, and funding and assistance. And then the next one is medium. Uh, will work to reduce the impact of hazards on campus buildings, critical facilities, and critical infrastructure. So, I was just trying to find out how much the city is gonna have to be spending beforehand in, in carrying up. It is my, my last question is, is this, uh, a plan that has been in place now for some time over a period of years, or is this something that's new?
This is an updated plan, and then the first part of the question is, um, by approving this, you're not obligating yourself or committing funds to completing these types of projects. Again, you're just affirming that, yes, those are steps that would mitigate our hazards. Um, they're identified, they're then projects we can take in on our own behalf to begin accomplishing. Or the other aspect of it again is, like said, is it, uh, it makes potential future opportunities. In fact, if there's federal or types of grants that come down the line that require it to be placed in a hazard mitigation plan.
Well, those are my questions on those two resolutions. I would move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Candace will vote. Killian? Doss?
Yes.
Kopp?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, next on our agenda is citizens' comments, observations, and petitions, if any. Uh, during this portion of the agenda, uh, we, we look to, uh, hear from people who are not speaking on items that are on the agenda. Uh, I would first, uh, commend the Dairy Days Committee for a fantastic Dairy Days and congratulate, uh, our, uh, uh, co-parade marshal, who is sitting next to me, who then became the co-parade announcer as soon as she was able to get to the end of the, uh, route and come back. And again, uh, congratulations on a very, uh, suc- successful historic reenactment. Um, I think that the weekend was spectacular. I'm interested in hearing what, uh, I know that, uh, I know they sold out of cream puffs. I don't know that they sold out of cheese curds, but it wouldn't, did they? Oh, yes. Okay.
Sunday, noon, or so.
Yeah, so I, I guess it's successful when you sell out of both cream puffs and cheese curds. I mean, after all. So, and probably, uh, popcorn too, kettle corn, who knows? Uh, any other person, uh, have any, uh, I have no one who registered to speak just in general terms. I do want to issue a thank you to our, um, fire department for, uh, uh, helping us yesterday in remembering, uh, the tragedy that be took our country twenty-two years ago. So thank you, Ryan, to you and your staff for, uh, elevating the flag and helping us to, uh, always remember. Anybody else? Otherwise, reports in the board, uh, packet, um, Community Safe Routes Committee, Jason?
Uh, nothing to add.
How about the Housing Authority Board, Lynn? Okay, and the Police and Fire Commission, Kathy?
Uh, nothing to add.
Okay, we had-
Community Safe Routes, I'd like to make, uh, some comments about it, um.
Okay, Community Safe Routes.
And, uh, the meeting was held, when I'm referring to, the meeting was held on August seventeenth, and we were discussing Jenner Park and the crossing, items related to the crossing of the Mineral Street and Howard Grove, right? And, um, minutes there, as far as Safe Routes Committee, uh, things that were brought up as far as concern about, uh, that street, such as, uh, a street, uh, needs to be, uh, having traffic which is slower, there are people going wrong way on the street. Uh, there's too much parking close to where people really should be crossing the street. Many of the people are handicapped. And, um, so a variety of things are needed for that particular park. And then the other thing I wanted to bring up, and the person is not here, is, um, the Parks and Recreation people had a meeting after the seventeenth, I believe, on that evening, and, uh, they were looking at, uh, the park itself and a couple of issues, especially that were pointed out, that we have two dead trees in the park. Uh, there are lights in the park that, uh, are broken and have bird nests in them. And so, and our picture's a broken light on the street, so I'm just curious as to what the progress is gonna be to, uh, rectify these situations that are occurring now in Jenner Park. And so, um, the park needs, uh, improvement. Needing improvement is, uh, taking the dead trees down, which can fall on people. Also, there are branches hanging from some of the trees. So I'm trying to find out who's responsible for taking down the trees and who's responsible for taking care of the lights, which are not functioning. So I guess that would be up to, uh, city manager to relay information as he learns it.
So where we're at today and reports coming back from, uh, staff on short order is that we have the Streets Assisted Parks today with the removal and trimming pruning of those trees that were in Jenner Park, uh, that happened today. In regards to the concerns with the crosswalk and streets, um, as you're aware, we do have a consultant, uh, firm Southwest Regional Planning Commission that is working with the pedestrian bike safety type of a plan. It's recommended by staff at this point to allow them to move forward with that plan and addressing not only potentially um, Mineral Street and the Jenner, Tower Jenner Park situation, but the plan in its entirety to potentially identify where, where, where our safe spots are and spots that need attention, and then make a decision with that information at hand. In context of the added, uh, maintenance to the park, again, those things have been identified, um, we know about them. Um, we're considering potentially adding of a, a CIP project in the front to can, to include the lights, uh, light fixtures. There's electrical work that has to be kind of reincorporated with making those work, as well as some retention wall issues, I believe. Um, there's another whole potentially, there's a couple of different issues with that park that may be packaged as a fixing a park type of a thing to be considered.
So the trees have come down.
Uh, yes.
Okay, thank you very much for your efforts.
And, and I would note that we have lots of trees in lots of parks that are in need of removal. I mean, if you were at the reenactment this weekend in Mountview Park, there must be, I'm gonna say fifteen?
Have a list I would defer to.
Trees in Mountview Park, I don't, I can't, I, I lost count, Howard.
Be- be- between, between Director Lau and myself, we are working at prioritizing those with all the other tasks that need to be performed. Um, you know, catch basin maintenance and other things, making sure that we can get these done. I mean, we have done some work. I know people were, uh, shocked when, uh, like three-quarters of the trees in Legion Park along Water Street came down, uh, all of a sudden.
Because they were dead.
Because they were dead.
Right.
But they all of a sudden came down in the space of a one or two days, because that was when we could fit it in to get, get those done in our work schedule. So, as we can get things done in the work schedule, that's what we do.
I, I gave you one, uh, one tree on, uh, Court Street, and that's in the street terrace, and the city is responsible for taking that one down.
I understand, um.
We, we almost need a new department of tree.
Well, I mean, um.
Street Terrace Key is city responsibility.
Street Terrace, yes, that is the city's responsibility. However, um, I believe that our forester has looked at that tree and said that that, it may need a little bit of trimming. I don't know that it necessarily needs to come down, but, uh, um, we'll, we'll look at that some more, um, and prioritize it with the rest of the trees that are obviously dead and need to come down.
Okay, uh, the Community Safe Routes report that was in this pack was from July, not from August. Uh, currently, we didn't, I, I don't know that the rest of the council was, uh, knowledgeable about those meetings. Um, moving on, uh, there were other reports in the pack at the Water and Sewer Financial Report, the Airport Financial Report, and then the Department Progress Reports for this, uh. Uh, are there any questions on those? Questions on Department Progress Reports? Okay, then let's move into the action portion of our agenda. The first of these is the adoption of the twenty-four twenty-eight Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. Now again, this is a plan, this is not a budget. Clint? That's our, our Nicola, pardon me.
Sure, either one. Um, yes, that, that is correct. So this is a new approach that was introduced in twenty-twenty-one to bring a more com- comprehensive look at, um, potential projects, uh, to capture a broad spectrum of projects, um, both those that are mandated or, uh, immediately needed for delivery of essential services to those which would improve or expand current service delivery to new programs or services that would enhance the city as a whole. Um, we talked about this at, uh, some length at the last meeting. Um, but just to condense, uh, my remarks from that meeting, this, um, plan forms the foundation for developing the twenty-twenty-four Capital Improvement Budget, which is a separate document. Um, and, uh, since twenty-twenty-one, um, in this year's plan, we have made an improvement to, uh, recalibrate the priority designations such that the number one priority is a number one on, uh, those designations. In other words, a number one would be a mandated or mission-driven or immediate need. And then, uh, a two, three, four, and then five, which would be a maintain or a public want or a project that's, uh, greater than three years into the future. Department Directors have assigned these priorities to the CIP items that they are requesting. And, uh, one thing that we added since the last meeting is that, um, on the department summary pages, projects have been colored green if they are new to the plan since last year. Projects in orange were previously located on the deferred streets list and were moved into the body of plan this year. Um, I mentioned at the last meeting that, um, because of that movement of projects, uh, we do have uh, a, a heavy burden of projects that are displayed for, uh, twenty-twenty-seven and twenty-twenty-eight. Um, and that is not realistic from a financing standpoint or from a logistical standpoint, uh, but we did want to, um, be transparent about the, uh, the need for those streets to be addressed, even though it's not, um, possible to do all of those streets in a five-year timeframe. Um, we are going to continue to improve this document as a planning tool in the years to come. Um, and we'll look at how we can both highlight projects that need to be done, but perhaps we can't afford, um, while also maintaining a, a document that is a useful tool for, uh, uh, Financial Management Plan, which is also a five-year plan and which is, uh, which uses the CIP plan as a basis for, um, extrapolating what our borrowing and funding needs might be for these projects. So, um, city staff are recommending adoption of the twenty-twenty-four to twenty-twenty-eight Comprehensive Capital Improvement Plan. Um, if, uh, if you have any questions for me or any of the project questions for Department Directors, most of them are here tonight.
Okay, questions? Again, this is a plan. This isn't the budget. This is, uh, all the things that, uh, that if funds were unlimited.
I was just going to bring up again, is probably, uh, a question for Howard, whether we can take a look at some of these street reconstructions and, uh, perhaps in some of the neighborhoods with some of the streets, I'm, I'm looking at Highbury Circle, I'm looking at some of these cul-de-sacs, whether we can remove, um, perhaps some of the storm sewers, if we could perhaps redesign some of the streets to function as, as the storm sewer to, to move water away from areas. And also, if we couldn't possibly get rid of the curb and gutter. Again, I recall the, um, group of citizens we had here from the west side of the city who wanted to discuss the fact that they didn't want their houses to become rentals. And I do recall one person identifying their street as, one of the wonderful parts of their street is that they don't have any curb and gutter, that they have such a natural, uh, transition from, from their lawn to the street. So I was just wondering if in the future, we couldn't consider the possibility of, of removing some of those things from, uh, some of these areas and, and in removing the cost at the same time of doing some of these projects, perhaps, or, or lowering, substantially lowering that cost. I'm just, something for the future thought, I guess, if it's possible, that's all. No need to comment, I get it.
I did, I think we, I know, I think we need suggestions.
I, I just wanted to, um, have an actually, um, appreciate the time that it took for us to happen. But I'm, I'm actually wondering if, um, the thought is that like, say in twenty-twenty-seven, we haven't hit these streets. Let's say we're waiting to, and we just spent like three million. Let's say we spent the money that's here. We spent three million on this. Now we gotta try to spend fourteen million. I'm thinking if we could possibly- Now we gotta try to spend fourteen million. I'm thinking if we could possibly um redirect or bring some of these potential um reconstructions of these streets over and kind of help balance it at least so we can get it down and even. I know you guys have a deep plan, but I'm just looking at um if we keep pushing back and pushing it back and push, you know what I'm saying? If we could probably take some of those reconstructions and bring them over to where um you know, there seems to be, we're not spending as much money.
Sure, sure. No, um, and and that's a very good point. Um, as we go through the C I P budget process itself, and as we update the financial management plan, our municipal advisors, Ellis will help us with um with projecting what the debt service will be on the projects we have identified along with the fire station project, and that will give us a sense of what what that debt service will um mean to the overall tax rate. Uh, and then that will help us to determine what seems to be um, you know, because because these decisions are always a a a decision between, we want to do these projects, um but we also have to think about what does that do to the tax rate.
Exactly. That's what I was thinking too, that maybe there's a reason why that I have not ran over yet. But based on what I've already reviewed, I'm thinking, okay, maybe a couple uh million over here and then, but yeah, that's what my concern would be.
Yeah, and that's certainly a part of the council's um prerogative to make those decisions and determine, you know, uh as we establish the budget to determine um how much to spend on these items.
Would you like me to comment at all or not? Or comment separately with Todd on his questions?
Well, I don't think we're here to debate how we construct streets tonight. I mean, I think he's got a suggestion that as you look at street construction in the future, you you consider, do we actually need curb and gutter here? Do we actually need to have sidewalk here?
Okay.
Do we actually?
I know that's a big, a big thing to uh give you here, and I'm not expecting you to address it. That's all right.
No, so I don't.
I I will acknowledge that that there are cost-saving measures that we can do and we can look at those on a case-by-case basis, depending on on the streets, and and we will do so. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I I think that that is presented in the in the uh context of our being, what, a hundred years behind in street reconstruction? I don't, I don't know where you currently say we are. Howard, is it that we're a hundred years behind or is it that we're ninety nine?
Well, uh, what I'm saying is that if we continue on this path, that it will take over one hundred years to cycle through all of the streets.
Right. So, and I think what Todd is suggesting is maybe we ought to
Make it cheaper. We're gonna have to make it cheaper somehow. We have one one project, we're doing a couple of blocks, and it's nearly a million dollars.
Well, it's, isn't it?
I mean, how can we possibly afford to continue? We have to figure something out.
Right. Or we have to grow a money tree.
Yeah.
Which I don't think has been successful anyway. All right, so we have uh on the agenda then the adoption of the twenty twenty four twenty eight uh comprehensive capital improvement plan. Again, this is a plan. This is not the budget, but a plan where where our department heads have uh yeah identified uh what they see as high, medium, and lower priority needs. So are we ready to take?
Um, I have one more thing. I don't know if it would be appropriate to add that, add this at this time, or if it would be more of a budget discussion item, but at the last Safe Roads Committee on the seventeenth of August, there was a recommendation voted on to um move up the crosswalk over at Jenner Towers um as a priority for twenty twenty four. So I don't know if we would add that to this or if we would wait till the budget.
I think we wait till it comes in on the budget.
Okay.
So I have a motion.
This evening is um.
Sorry.
Are you going to ask us to approve this whole long list? Or are we gonna go through this list page by page?
No, I would be recommending that you say, yes, these are the identified projects essentially for consideration to bring forward in the budget.
Doesn't mean that they're going to be funded. This isn't the budget. This is what department heads have identified as needs. That doesn't mean they're the only needs. That doesn't mean that someone won't identify more needs, nor does it mean that some of these needs might not fall off the list for whatever reason. This is basically a planning document.
And one of the things that um became apparent to us, I think, as staff, as we went through this process this year was uh as you just mentioned, things do come up uh from time to time. Uh, there was some mention of storm, a stormwater pond that the council considered and uh decided not to fund because it would have taken two-thirds of the entire C I P budget or what we think will probably be the budget. And so what do we do with those items? You know, do they disappear forever or do they put on, is there maybe an appendix of items that could be at the back of things that were considered and 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 chosen not to fund? Um, is there an opportunity for these things to come back again before the council? How does one get a project into the plan if if it's not something that staff has identified? Um, and I think those are legitimate questions and ones that we will be endeavoring to answer as we go through this in the next year.
Did have a motion if anybody was prepared. Um, move to adopt the twenty twenty four to twenty twenty eight comprehensive capital improvement plan as it's shown here.
Okay, we have a motion by Todd and a second by Kathy to adopt the plan as as presented the twenty twenty four twenty eight comprehensive capital improvement plan. Candace will vote. Helen?
Yes.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop? Arts?
Yes.
Parrot?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, the next item on our our uh action agenda is amending uh the task for the tied task force uh resolution. This would be resolution twenty three twenty eight. Clint?
Madam Chair, tonight, I'm sorry, Madam President, looking tonight for a proposal for changing what was resolution twenty one oh three, the creation of a task force inclusion diversity equity or a tied task force. Uh, purpose for this, as outlined in the staff notes, is first that um looking to change to allow for the chair position to be filled by a member of the Platteville Common Council. Uh, reasoning for this is that the current resolution allows for the chair to be filled by a citizen member. Uh, we have yet to been able to be able to fill that with a citizen member. Um, we do have a council member that has expressed interest in serving his chair and looking for then potentially a solution to have a chair in place to help uh drive that uh that body and the decisions that are put before it. Um, number two, establishing a defined character, I'm sorry, a defined charter statement and deadline for the task force reasoning. Current resolution gives a vision and purpose for the task force, but it lacks clarity on the defined goal and a timeline is typically associated with using the the concept of a task force. Number three, looking to divide, uh defining the disposition of the task force upon completion of the charter. So essentially, the amended resolution will dissolve a task force when the goals of the charter have been met. Uh, the continued need of a body to monitor diversity, equity, inclusion initiatives will be evaluated by the task force, and there may be a potential recommendation of, oh, you know, what types of tasks should be in place and should that be kind of bodied an umbrella underneath a new committee type of of group or some other type of a body uh focus. So with that, then you'll see uh there is uh attached with the staff note, a proposal for the changes to that resolution, which would be a new resolution twenty three twenty eight. And again, you're looking at the first bit, uh it therefore be resolved. Uh, we would be striking that the chair is selected from the ten persons and allowing for the chair to be selected from these twelve persons, which would be the ten citizen members and two council members. And then we're including then, uh it further be resolved that the said task force is charged with evaluating the diversity, equity, inclusion needs within the scope of authority of the City of Platteville, developing future initiatives and developing recommendations on which initiatives to the common council by no later than March of twenty twenty four to incorporate into future strategic planning. And then we have a further be resolved that upon receipt of the recommendations by the common council, the task force will be dissolved or transitioned into some type of a term of a permanent type of body. Included with that then is a uh clean draft of the proposed resolution and a tentative timeline in trying to meet the the marks on this. Um, you can see, again, this is a document that was kind of talked about and agreed upon uh by consensus of the members that were present at the last or present at the last meeting, uh but not by vote, as we did not have a a full quorum. Um, but it kind of puts us on a timeline to start taking a look at initiatives in an incremental fashion of within the city organization, things that happen within our walls, uh then evaluating how our service delivery and impacting our our citizens and clients. And then we start talking about potentially community engagement and the uh presence of a long-term type of a body and rolling those out in an incremental fashion with considerations for what are the authorities that we can handle within the city and understanding of of financial needs and uh resources that are available. Madam President.
Okay, questions on this? Uh, well, I know that when we established this task force, there was no end date. Uh, we have talked about that. A task force is generally got an end date, so I think that that's good. Um. Any other questions or concerns?
I have some comments on that.
Okay.
So um I'm reading from the back of the first page. It talks about the twelve persons. And then mine looks like it's a comma, so I'd make that a period. And then uh the word says city manager and one additional city staff member and one recorder facilitator note taker. I'd move move that down to the bottom where it starts with that the task force shall have the city manager, a D and a department director as the staff lays on with no voting powers and that the task force shall make such rules for establishment of dates, times, and procedures as necessary. So I I think that fits better to put down there and take away this thing in the first uh part there that I just mentioned before, just for the result, uh task force shall be composed of fifteen members. I'd recommend that and change that over. And then um another thing in in reading this, you you do have some uh typos in this thing, so some uh places where you you put things in caps and then don't put things in caps. We need to be consistent. And then the last one that I wanted to point out is um I guess the third page. It says that it is further resolved that upon receipt of these recommendations, and I thought the better wording would be to on adoption of these recommendations by the common council, the task force will be dissolved or transitioned into a permanent committee. And so that was something that I considered very important. A task force forces don't last forever. They go to, they go to possibly removal completely, or they go to becoming a committee, they go to becoming a commission. So I think that what this should say then, funny, is that on adoption of recommendations, that it's gonna go to something permanent. Doesn't have to be a permanent committee. It could be a permanent commission. So these are my thoughts on on this.
I guess my concern with this is if this, and I wasn't here, I don't believe when this was developed to start with. If there was a reason or a need to develop the task force and it was set to identify a problem or make some changes, um, I guess I I understand. If this is to make another committee, I think if we go earlier into our book here today, which is about four inches thick, and we look at all the appointments that haven't been made to other committees, again, I I say as something I've said in the past that to reduce and to to reduce the number of committees we have, especially those that don't have a defined purpose over the long term and consolidate some of those that do and kind of reduce, I want to say what is government drag on some of the decision-making. I saw decisions that needed to be made this week uh by the planner, last week by the planning commission, and it seemed to be something that didn't require ten or fifteen people to sit down and have to think about. It all had very commonsensical-based uh decisions to be made that, quite frankly, I think the staff could have made without anybody's input. So not to dive or not to move away from what I'm trying to say here, if the tied commission task force has something to do, let's get it done. Let's move on. We shouldn't waste any more time or money. Let's get get it taken care of and let's move on. I don't think it has to be something that's historical like the mining museum in the city. That's all.
Other comments?
I think that's why there was a a deadline added to this, isn't that? That was the reason. But one thing, um, Ken, you were talking about changing the word um that upon the receipt of these recommendations to the adoption of these recommendations, can't we receive recommendations without adopting them?
I can comment on my my thoughts of using receipt versus adopt is I twofold is that recommendations coming to you folks do not automatically get adopted. It still becomes your decision on it. And the second part is then if onesie twosies or some of them are not adopted, then we're back to, well, kind of a limbo status on, well, did they complete their goals and bringing recommendations forward or not? So that was my my mindset on using the receipt on on behalf of the city council versus the adoption.
Well, some of these will be redid or be adopted and some will not.
Right. I mean, some may be adopted. They'll all be received.
Right. They would all be received. They might not all be adopted. Lynn, did you have a comment?
Yeah, two. One, um, I wanted to um speak to what Ken said. That's used here, but if we do that, we lose who the rest of the fifteen people are. So we, I think that it needs to stay in there because from twelve people from asking for fifteen people, we still need to tell you who the other three people would be. Um. I don't know if you can catch that one. Um, and then just to piggyback on the whole concept of the task force, when we, when the task force was um created, I think it was created a little before me, but I got in here afterwards, and I think that the it was a much-needed uh relevant force that just had no, it is very much needed, but um and it needs to serve the other committee, but it had no one who was willing to just kind of step up and grab it. Adam was doing, trying to do that, but then we lost Adam. I just didn't think it would be fair to bring that on to Clint when we know what the issues are that are going on here. So um, I agree, either do it or get off the pot. And I think at this point, we're ready to do it. So um that's just where I am with. I think that it's just a task, a force that actually should be a committee that should represent the city because we don't have anything like that that the community can come to and and air out or feel, you know, their inclusion and diversity issues um that could liaison between them and the city and the uh department. So it it is a need, but we just have not done anything, so you can't really see it yet. So once we get all this legalized and, you know, the wording down and the resolutions and we start moving forward, then you'll you'll see the progress happen. But I do get what you're saying. I get it.
Okay, well, we've had discussion. Do we have anything? Kathy?
Couple of comments. Um. I agree with Todd with uh establishing another committee. Um, and I think brought this up before, um, needs to be thought out quite carefully. Talking possibly end result of creating
No, I don't, I don't think that's what it.
That's the task force.
No, I think that's the task force. I don't think that's the committee. I think that the resolution says upon receipt, the task force will be dissolved or maybe transitioned into a committee, but it doesn't say it will.
Right.
And I think in Clint's write-up, he he noted that uh this would possibly some of these initiatives would be put into other committees or maybe become staff initiatives or whatever. So I don't think that there's, I I have a feeling that if we look at our staff who staff these committees plus our council members who serve on these committees, there's probably, if I said to staff members and or to council members, shall we create another committee or who would be supportive of that? I don't, I doubt very much whether we'd see very many hands go up. Maybe none. So I I don't think that's the uh, that's the intent.
Some of the discussion points have been on i- it can they be duties assigned to an existing type of a body? Um, can this be uh more so of a policy structure with where we're reaching out to experts and a bullpen of people that we can help bring in to help us evaluate types of things? Experts in a bullpen of people that we can help bring in to help us evaluate types of things. Um, so it, again, or is it, you know, a staff-driven type of a body again with. Consulting support or view support, there's, there's more than potentially one option at the table versus. Another committee formalized body with. All the person, all of, all the persons are a mix of that, so there's, there's options on the table.
So do I hear anybody who wants to make a motion or?
Well, this was listed for information.
Oh, was it? No, I think it's on for action. It's an action item.
Oh, let me look on the.
We do have it action and the reason that I would, uh, we didn't, we did not have this to per discussion last month. If we can take action tonight, it would give us an extra month to try to. Uh, get the wheels turning with potentially assigning a chair, uh, affirming. Membership of that task force and kind of getting the wheels turning, if, uh, it's something that you did want to bring back. And it's certainly something you could do too, we would amend our timeline accordingly.
Okay, next question. Do. Does anyone not feel a need for a committee that would serve for diverse? That is that, that we don't feel like there should be a committee and maybe when the community has an issue like that, would they take it, just come to city? Council and bring it up, like I'm trying to understand.
I guess my only, my only concern is that everybody sitting over there. Has forty hours of, of a, a week to work. And what are they going to spend their time on? Is it going to be on this one hundred year problem? Of streets, is it going to be on the issue that we need a fire department? Is it going to be on the issue that we need crosswalks in other places? What are they going to spend their time on? And. The creation of more and more. Drag on decision-making at the government level or committees and other. Hoops for people to jump through to make decisions. Just reduces their amount of work time, they're already up here this week, I'm, I'm guessing some of them with committees and other things. They're, they're going to be spending, um. Perhaps a, a quarter of their work week just sitting through these kinds of things and, and then they're going to spend another quarter preparing documents. So we can all look through them and ask questions. So I got about fifty percent, I got about twenty hours out of Howard this week where he's going to actually. Probably have time to go and look at some of the problems he has and develop some ideas and strategies with his people as to how to fix them, so my. Concern is that we stopped. Uh, we stopped dumping. Things that perhaps even a, a local government shouldn't be involved with at all because it requires a state and federal response more than it does at a local government. So that's the only concern I have. Forty hours of work of we, you know, a week, I hope they're worrying about some of these trees that may fall on people, which they are. They've got that this week, we've got streets, we've got all the other problems of the city. So let's not start creating more. Because it's a social idea, or perhaps it's, there's a problem, there's an unidentified problem. We haven't seen that evidence yet. That's all my concern is. To be. I guess bear with it, I didn't. Certainly.
Hey, anybody else want to weigh in?
Well, it seems like that the focus is like. That. The end result is either a committee or not a committee, but I'm looking at this as. That could be an option and what that looks like, who knows? Um, I don't think it needs to be, you know, it doesn't necessarily need to be like your traditional committee where. You know, staff members involved. You know, I think that's the whole point of, of going through this process is to. Figure out how to address this area. And not necessarily, you know, just go one direction.
So. Are we ready to take action or not?
Well, my, my. Comment on this is that what we're voting for.
We're voting to.
For something that we think is, um. In need of some more writing to improve it, so. What am I voting for?
You're voting?
I'm, I'm giving, I've given you a suggestion.
Okay, so the three.
What are, what are we actually going to vote for?
So the three changes that have been asked for. Is to allow the chair position to be filled by a Platteville common council member.
I got that.
The second one is to establish. A deadline for the task force, it needs to be done by March of twenty twenty-four. And the third one is to define that at the end of that. That this task force would be dissolved. And. They would make a recommendation whether there needs to be a continuing body or whether those. Uh, initiatives might be transitioned to our human resource department or med, maybe they. Become, so the task force would complete its work by. March of twenty twenty-four and give us recommendations. So those are the three things that. Have been brought forward.
Well, since they're already here and we've already went down this path already, I guess I'll make a motion to let them continue down their path, sometimes they say. The best way to end something is to let people string it out and talk about it, so motion. Um, is going to be to adopt resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight, a many of the task force of inclusion, diversity, equity. Also known as tied creation and charter resolution. As we've discussed at some level here.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty-three dash twenty-eight, uh, Candace will vote. Killian.
My answer on this is no.
Dos?
Yes.
Cop?
Yes.
Arts?
Yes.
Parrot? Casper?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're going to move into the information and discussion portion of our agenda. The first item is adding handicap parking stalls to the museum property, uh, Eric.
Yes, presently the museum campus has no official handicap parking stalls. Um, the, uh, until a day when we might be able to build an off-site parking facility, the most, uh, logical and convenient location. For at least two stalls would be on the, uh, backside, the south side of the Rock School building. So there's sufficient space for two spots there and, uh, someone, uh, with. Accessibility concerns would be able to easily progress from those spots. To the back door of the museum. Um, with an accessible automatic door opener.
So you have the accessible automatic door opener.
Exa, yes, we do, exactly. So, um, for those, uh. Few individuals who would wish to make those, uh. Um. Reservations in advance, then we'd let them know where to park, um, and how to access the museum in the most convenient fashion. Those spots then, uh, should you approve these spaces would be signed right there. The matter of side, street side signage is more complicated and the short story is we would continue to not have. Street side signage, but, uh, we do have accessibility. Information on the website and invite people to call for more information, so we would, you know, verbally help to. Ask your people towards those, uh, parking spots.
Okay, questions on this, this would add, add two handicap parking stalls on the new, uh, south side of the Rock School. Um. Uh, and, uh, the, uh, cost would be minimal, paint and signage, I guess.
Exactly.
Okay.
Eric, I just want to think, I think it's really neat when you, uh, partner and when the city partners with its university. Um. This university partners and we come up with some of these plans, it gives the kids something to be proud of and be a part of the city and. Some actual, uh. Real life experience, so. Thanks for doing that, that's pretty neat.
Thank you.
The other questions concerned, otherwise this will come back. I guess for action at our next meeting. Guess we have to take action. Do we have to take action? So it's an information item, he'll just do it. I didn't think we should have to take action on these handicap parking stalls.
I know, I'm curious, you said there would be no street side signage? But. But there would be signs designating the spots that people could see when they're, so people wouldn't park there if they shouldn't park there.
Correct. Typically, we don't have traffic that makes its way to that south side of the museum. And if someone did accidentally happen that way, they would be invited to, uh. Take advantage of the street parking, so, um. This would allow people. Probably with advanced notice to be able to have handicap. Parking for the museum, whereas in the past. And. A that hasn't come up frequently and then we've informally asked them to park there, but it hadn't been formalized with striping and this would simply be a bit more professional and welcoming.
Okay, any other questions? Otherwise, I guess you stripe away. Okay, second information and discussion item then tonight is contract twelve dash twenty-three alleys. And the Platteville Business Incubator Parking Lot, Howard.
Yes, thank you, um. We decided to, uh, do these contracts together, get a little bit better, uh. Better economy of scale, um, we have the alley paving had a budget of twenty thousand dollars. Um, the plan was to, uh, have. Do the, uh, alley north of and parallel to Furnace Street between second and fourth streets. And then, uh, if funding was available, we would pave a portion of the alley running north from West Gridley, uh, between Hickory and Chestnut Streets. Um. And as far as the alley paving goes, uh, to do both of those alleys. Will come, uh, to a little over eighteen thousand dollars, so, so, um. That will in fact be within budget. The Platteville Business Incubator Parking Lot had a budget of seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the intent was to make spot repairs and thin overlay in the front portion, however, that came in. A lot higher than budget and so Delta Three and PBII are reviewing options. To reduce the project costs, uh, the bid opening was on the sixth, so, um. We're asking that Delta Three and PBII present their recommendations at the next meeting. Um. For how they're going to reduce the scope. To be within budget.
Okay, questions on these paving projects? And then we'll hear from, uh, in our next packet, we should have a report from Delta Three and PBII. That we would, uh, hear how they intend to reduce costs to the seventy-five thousand.
Correct.
All right, any, no other questions, then the last item on our information and discussion is sale of city-owned land, this is sixty Ellen Street, Joe.
Yes, thank you, um, so the city, uh, acquired that property several years ago in anticipation of. An expansion of the fire department at that current location. Um, that is not an option that's being pursued longer, so it's property that the city no longer has a identified purpose for. Um, so it's excess property, um, so it's came about, uh, just now as far as a consideration because the. Property, uh, adjacent to it at fifty Ellen Street is privately owned, but it's for sale. That realtor reached out to the city because they have a buyer that's interested in acquiring both properties. And using them as a, a redevelopment residential redevelopment site, so. Um, they were, wanted some feedback as far as if the property is for sale and how that would work as far as the sale of that property if, if the city was interested in getting rid of it, so. Um, we did take this plant commission for some input. Um, they did recommend, uh, proceeding with selling the property since it's no longer needed. Uh, for the purpose it was acquired for. Um, they didn't really identify specifically the process to follow, but, um. There seemed to be a majority that thought the request for proposal process would be the best, since that's what we have used in the past. Um, but they were all in agreement that we should proceed with sale of the property. Uh, there are also a few suggestions, it wasn't part of the motion that the council considered putting the funds. Uh, from the sale towards the, the fire station project. Um, but anyway, at this point, I guess we wanted to make sure the council was in agreement to proceed with the sale and. If you've got an input on the process that you'd like to follow. Um, if you do want to pers- pursue with the, uh. Uh, request for proposal process, I did include a draft. Uh, document for your review as well.
Okay, questions?
Did you mention what the?
Uh, the, they, they haven't provided, uh, details at this point, they just said it would be a, a residential redevelopment, I think, a multifamily project.
But Joe, if we do an RFP, they would then have to.
Right, and I think that's why the.
That would be a good fit to do an RFP.
Right.
Is then they would have to present the plan of what they intend to do. And we would have more latitude on saying, yeah, we don't. We don't. We don't agree with that.
You, you would necessarily have to choose the highest offer.
Offer, we.
You could pick the project that you thought was best. For the city in general.
So that's the advantage of an RFP process, is you have a little bit more. Control if you want to. To use it that way, it's, it's not the highest bidder gets it. It's not that whatever project is proposed. Is acceptable. So this will come back for action next time? Or do you, do we, do we? Or do we just go ahead with the RFP process?
Well, I would think eventually the council has to approve obviously the sale of it, but I, I guess if there's consensus on moving forward with that, we can just. Proceed with the RFP, I would think. Unless you want to discuss it further and.
For the interest of time, why don't we, in, in the economy, why don't we move forward with the RFP process and. I mean, there's no reason for us to sit on this property, we, the quicker we get a return to the tax base, the better off we are. You know?
Yeah, I.
Everybody agrees.
Does everybody think the RFP process, okay, Joe, then?
Right, will do.
Why don't you proceed with that process? Okay. Well, that ends the information and discussion portion of our agenda tonight. Uh, there are several people in the audience, we do have a work session scheduled. And for the benefit of all, the reason we scheduled the work session, if we, if we didn't have it as a work session, you would be asked to come to the microphone, introduce yourself. And you would be able to say something, but you would never be able to come back to the microphone and you wouldn't, I mean, a, a work session is how we have a discussion. So that's why we're having a work session rather than having this as an agenda item. Uh, as an information and discussion, it's my understanding that the townships. Uh, had some questions, so, uh, we will now adjourn for about five minutes to, and then when we re, uh, uh, establish ourselves. We'll sit at the table over here rather than at our desks, so that we can have a co, a more, uh, conversation.